Good evening again, councilors, members of the public. It is... Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30. I will call the Tuesday, May 21st, regular meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Olson.
Here.
Councillor Van Sickle. Councillor Bender.
Here.
Councillor Sweeney.
Here.
Councillor Fantasy.
Here.
Councillor Elm.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Sutherland.
Here.
Councillor Kern.
Here.
Councillor Dobek. And Youth Councillor Newman and Levine.
We have a quorum, councilors. Is there objection to suspending the rules and moving to item 3.2, selection of council president to the end of the meeting?
No.
Seeing no objection, the rules will be suspended and moved to the end. Approve of the minutes?
No move.
Motion is by Councillor Dobek, second by Councillor Ludwig, to approve the minutes of the May 7th, 2019 meeting. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 5.1 is a resolution introduced by the Plan Commission to vacate the North-South Alley located near Lambourn Avenue and North 58th Street.
Well, the public... We'll open the public hearing first. Would anybody like to speak in this public hearing? Anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Would anybody like to speak to the resolution from the Plan Commission? Seeing none, all entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Motion is by Councillor Bender, the second by Councillor Olson. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 6 is a consent agenda.
Motion is by Councillor Fantasy, the second by Councillor Kern. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
7.1 is the Finance Committee recommendations for May 9th.
Motion is by Councillor Kern, the second by Councillor Elm. Is there discussion? Councillor Fantasy.
Can we pull item 7 from that? I'll be abstaining from that.
Item 7, we will set aside the balance of the items. Is there discussion on the balance of the items? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Could I get an independent motion for item 7?
No move.
The motion is by... Motion is by Councillor Olson. Who made the second? I'm sorry. Councillor Bender made the second to approve the RFP with Dr. Maria Todd. Minutes will reflect that Councillor Fantasy has abstained. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.2 is the License and Fees Committee recommendation for May 13th.
Motion is by Councillor Bender, the second by Councillor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.1, I am recommending approval of the miscellaneous licenses.
No move.
Motion is by Councillor Dobek, second by Councillor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.2, Environmental Services Director Roberts is recommending approval of the Lawn Maintenance 2019 Service Contract to Udine Trucking for an anticipated annual cost of approximately
Motion is by Councillor Dobek, second by Councillor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.3, Public Works Director Janigo is recommending approval toward the 2019 Service Contract for City-Owned Parcel Lawn Mowing to Easy Living Services LLC at the per-square-foot price, and this is a correction, it should be .00949.
Is there a motion to approve the item as corrected? Sorry, who made the motion?
Motion approved.
The motion is by Councillor Fantasy, the second by Councillor Elm, to approve the motion as corrected. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.4, Director Janigo is recommending approval of the lease and purchase of a 2015 Highlander Toyota Highlander XLE from Kerry Toyota for $22,540.
Motion is by Councillor Dobek, second by Councillor Van Sickle. Is there discussion? Councillor Sweeney?
Did we do a lease-purchase analysis of this?
Mr. Carlson, are you able to answer that? Short answer is yes.
Yeah, we looked at it. When you say lease-purchase option, what are you asking exactly?
Say it again?
Well, what are you asking? Do we look at leasing it versus buying it?
Right, right.
Yep. If we went to buy... If we return this vehicle and purchase a new one, or lease a new one, the prices are included in the memo. It'd be probably $29,000 versus $22,000 by this one outright by the end of the lease, if that makes sense.
I know that, but did we do a lease-purchase analysis?
Well, we looked at...
Or did we just go ahead and buy the lease it from?
We looked at the alternatives of leasing a new vehicle versus purchasing a new vehicle versus buying this existing vehicle.
It came out cheaper to lease it?
I'm sorry, councillor, it came out cheapest to buy it, which is what is proposed here.
Okay. But you did look at leasing it, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
8.5, Finance Director Vito is recommending approval to move forward into negotiations with Kemper Sports as recommended by the Golf Course Task Force Committee.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to the presentation for the second time. So, I just wanted to give you an update on what's been happening the last four months with the golf course and the progress that we've made with the Golf Course Task Force. A little bit of history before I do that. Prior to 2005, we... The city managed the golf course ourselves. We hired our own employees, ran all the operations. And then around 2003, 2004, we had started to run some small deficits at that time, and we thought we would look into a different arrangement for operating the golf course. And at that time, we entered into a lease contract with NAMAGI Public Golf Course, more commonly known as Mark Carlson. And we've had that lease arrangement since 2005, so we've done that for the last 15 years. Couple of years back, I think things were getting more challenging on both sides of negotiating the lease, and that was for a number of reasons. The downturn in the economy in 2008, the building up of a lot of golf courses, and combining that with less golfers, actually, less younger golfers coming into the sport. It kind of got a number of municipal golf courses in bad financial situations. So, we hired... In 2016, we hired a consultant named J.J. Keegan, a very knowledgeable expert in the golf industry, and we asked him a number of questions. Help us to understand what we're doing right with our golf course? What are we doing wrong? Do you have any suggestions on how we can improve? How can we survive with this decline in the golf industry? He helped us to understand what was happening in a lot of other municipalities. We basically were not alone, but what we found was that it really was a reality check for us because the structure of the lease had Mark Carlson sending money in our directions, not the opposite, which is very common. It's very common these days to have golf courses that are subsidized by the cities that own them. So, J.J. Keegan was very helpful. He gave us ultimately a recommendation of various things that he advised that we should do. We did a number of them. We didn't do all of them, but I'm going to fast-forward here to early... Or late last year. We did receive notice from our current operator, Mark Carlson, November 28th of 2018, notifying us of his intent to have the 2019 year as his last year to operate the golf course, that he would be retiring from this contract. So, what that did is it put in motion a pretty quick timeframe where we then needed to find out what are our options if Mark will no longer be operating our golf course, who will operate the golf course in 2020. So, what we did was we established Golf Course Task Force Committee, and that committee consisted of a couple of city councillors, City Councillor Dan Olson and Jack Sweeney. We had some city staff, Chris Bronson and Linda Kadot. We had our contracted city internal auditor, who has a very good financial background. He helped us. And then, we also thought it was very important to add the presidents of the men's and women's clubs at NAMAGI to get their perspective as well. So, the role of the task force was to assist us with the RFP, Request for Proposal Process, to provide input for selecting a new operator to recommend to the city council. And my role, I was not a voting member. The other seven members were voting members. My role was just to guide the process and establish the timeline so we could bring a recommendation to you as a council, not in September of the year when we're in scramble mode, but to give you enough time to think about it and to help us to make the transition into 2020. I also needed to keep all stakeholders in mind that it's not just the golf course that we're thinking about, but we have city taxpayers that we're thinking about as well, being that we have moved into the position of the city subsidizing this operation. I also analyzed the financial impacts of the proposals that we received and got assistance also from Assistant Director Bronson and Tom Anderson on that as well. So, we began meeting February 5th. I think we had eight meetings. Some of them were long, hours long, and it culminated last Thursday with a recommendation from the task force. A lot of... We talked about a lot of things. We had to make sure that we had a clear understanding of what the vision of our golf course was, what our mission statement was. We had a lot of things to talk about as far as capital equipment. Who would be buying the equipment come January 1st of 2020? Would it be the proposer, or would it be the city? And it ends up it will be the latter. The task force helped us to evaluate the proposals, do the interviewing, and all the while, we wanted to make a recommendation to the council that would maximize income to the city, or stated another way, if we were to incur deficits, to have them as small as possible. We also wanted to keep in mind improving the quality of the golf course, keeping up on our capital assets and improvements that are needed there. And then, as far as the operator, working with them to improve operational efficiencies, have a good asset management system, make sure there's good internal controls, good cash management, strong record-keeping, and throughout the whole process, a high degree of transparency. We did receive three proposals. One was from Billy Casper Group, one from Kemper Sports, and one was actually Mark Carlson, who changed his mind, must have been around mid-February, where he was kind of reconsidering his decision to terminate the contract, and he wanted to put a proposal in as well. So, a little difference between the two types of proposals that we received. Mark's proposal was... Or is similar to the current lease contract that we have with him, where he proposed, "I will send X amount of money in your direction," versus the other two contracts where those two groups came in and said, "We will operate your golf course, but we will charge you a fee to do that. If they run it well enough and there's net income, that would come back to the city." And I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And again, flip side, if it was a deficit, it also would come back to the city. From the analysis we did with the proposals and looking at the big picture of the amount of capital that's currently needed at the golf course, I don't think there was any one of the three proposals that would have put us in a position where the city did not need to annually provide some sort of subsidy to keep the golf course open. We then asked each of the proposers to provide five years of the projections that they thought they would have with their operations running our golf course. And so, the highlights of those proposals, under the Billy Casper Group, the management contract, they asked that 7% of gross revenue at the golf course would be paid to them as a form of a management fee. And then, if net income was present at the end of the year, they also asked for 15% of that net income as an incentive to them to run the course well. The remaining 85% balance would go to the city. And then, one final thing they asked for was that 3% reserve payment would go to them, 3% of gross sales would go to them, and they would put that into capital improvements at the course. Kemper Sports, also a management contract, was a little simpler. They just said, "For $7,000 a month, we will manage your golf course. If there's net income at the end of the year, 100% of it goes back to the city." Mark Carlson, NAMAGI Public Golf Course, proposed a lease of $50,000 annual paid to the city, and in a lease situation, whatever remains after revenue and expenses stays with Mark. So, what we then did was, we had to figure out a way to make this an apples-to-apples comparison, and so, really, the only information we had was the history of Mark running the golf course and the financial statements that he was sending to us that would show total revenue, total expenses, and how close he was coming to breaking even at the end of any given year. We used those revenue numbers to help us project what would be the situation with Billy Casper or with Kemper coming in to run the golf course. And two of the proposals, we estimated, would be fairly similar as far as cash coming back to the city, and those were Kemper Sports and Mark Carlson's proposal. Billy Casper wasn't expected to be as high of a return to the city simply because they are... They would be getting 15% of the net income. Ultimately, the task force did recommend, by a vote of seven to zero, to go with Kemper Sports. I believe they felt that there was more of a long-term commitment with Kemper versus going with Mark. And there were a lot of... We talked about the pros and cons of having Kemper Sports come in to manage, and some of the things... There were a lot of pros mentioned. Some of the top ones I've outlined here, very family-oriented. They want a very family-oriented experience at our golf course. They do a lot of what they called empowering their staff. What they want to do is, when a golfer goes to the golf course, they want that experience from start to finish to be a very, very positive experience, and they do a lot of training of all of their employees to ensure that that happens. Kemper had a very competitive approach. They wanted to market our course substantially to attract golfers, to attract more rounds of golf. And we're very partnership-oriented as far as working with the city, working with our visions for the golf course, to make sure that they would do what we wanted as far as our goals. We also then checked references and got a lot of very good references from other municipal golf courses that have been working with Kemper, and just have some comments there of the feedback from them. One thing that I would point out on this slide is the city of La Crosse entering into a... Recently entering into a 20-year agreement with Kemper. I think that speaks... They have had an agreement with Kemper. I don't know how long they have, but I guess that speaks to their commitment that they want to go forward with them. They're very happy with the results of Kemper's operation of their course. So, I already mentioned this. The recommendation of the task force is to go with Kemper, and so, at this point, it's now in the hands of the city council. What we're asking of you tonight is to give staff the approval to go forward and negotiate a contract that we would bring back to the council most likely on June 18th.
What is your pleasure, councillor?
Motion approved.
Motion is by Councillor Bender, the second by Councillor Sutherland, to approve the recommendation of the Director Vito and the Golf Course Task Force. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please... Councillor Fantasy?
We all know there's a risk in business, and the golf course is no doubt a business. And under the current lease agreement, Mark Carlson assumes all of that business risk, and he pays us $50,000 a year. Under this new contract with Kemper, we assume 100% of that business risk. Granted, there's the opportunity for, you know, we also get the profit, so there's no... I don't want to forget about that, but we're assuming a great deal of risk, and we're paying them $7,000 to assume that risk. I haven't seen enough in this to give me that confidence that this is going to save the golf course. We're going to be, you know, on the profit side, and we'll be able to improve the golf course. I just haven't seen enough from, you know, from this proposal to give me that confidence to, you know, to move forward with this Kemper.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
The motion carries.
Item 8.6, Parks Recreation and Forestry Director Kadot is recommending approval of the deed to gift to the State Historical Society of Wisconsin, transferring artifacts recovered from Wisconsin Point Site to ensure their continued preservation and protection.
The motion is by Councillor Van Sickle, the second by Councillor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 8.7, Director Kadot is recommending approval of recommendations made by the Business Improvement District Design Committee to purchase 150 snowflake silhouette from Display Sales for a total cost of $67,950.
The motion is by Councillor Elm, the second by Councillor Ludwig. Is there discussion? Councillor Dobek?
I'd like to know how far down Tower Avenue north they will go.
Director Kadot?
They will be similar to how they have been.
In other words, the north end does not get decorations again this year. They stop at Winter and Broadway, and their taxpayers go all the way down to Third and Tower, and they never, ever have a decoration put up, and they're paying towards these two.
Councillor Sutherland. I'm sorry. Councillor Sutherland.
I believe this is... I don't know if... Wherever the Business Improvement District ends, as far as they will go, if that makes any sense of... The Business Improvement District ends at Winter Street. That's as far as they would go, and that's what I'm gathering of this. Am I correct? Is the bid putting this through?
The Business District ends at Winter? What are the other ones?
Improvement District.
Director Kadot, is... Do the decorations end at the boundary of the Business Improvement District?
No, they are in South Tower on Belknap, all the way to Ends, and further north on Tower, but the Business Improvement District helped with the recommendation on the design.
So, who's paying for them?
It would come out of them. As it's outlined, there was $200,000 for decorations budgeted in the CIP. So, this is $67,950 out of that, and their new banners will be designed for East End Business Area and few other decorations around that will be coming forward as well.
Well, the Business District goes all the way down to Third and Tower plus, so why are they not included?
I think, Mayor, you might want to speak to the idea.
Yeah, only we're a little bit outside the scope of this. This is to purchase the actual decorations.
Yes, purchase, but I want to know before I vote on it how far down they're going to go.
I'm saying, we haven't... Well, Director Kadot has answered that question.
Yes.
We could potentially amend that. That doesn't have to be a final determination. This is just to purchase those snowflakes. I'm saying, for now, they would go the same place they would... They've always gone unless we choose to alter that decision.
Well, I'd like to alter it, to amend that, to go down to North Third Street.
Yes, but that's not what's on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor, we can put that on potentially the Parks and Recreation Commission. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries.
Parks Recreation and Forestry Director Kadot is also recommending approval of the purchase of 1,482 cubic yards of engineered wood fiber from Circle Inc. for playground surfacing at a cost of $21.70 per cubic yard for a total anticipated cost of $32,159.40.
The motion is by Councillor Kern, the second by Councillor Sutherland. Councillor Bender made the second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.1 is a resolution introduced by the Department of Parks, Recreation and Forestry of the City of Superior, supporting the proclamation of International Migratory Bird Day in the City of Superior.
The motion is by Councillor Ludwig, the second by Councillor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 11.2 is a resolution submitted by Councillor Olson and the Northern Wisconsin Building and Construction Trades Council, requesting support for Husky Energy Private Project Labor Agreement.
The motion is by Councillor Olson, the second by Councillor Dobek. We have some public comment from Mr. Kyle Bukovic. So, you're approaching the podium, sir. I want to remind you, our rules limit you to three-minute speaking time.
Sounds good. Good evening. My name is Kyle Bukovic. I'm the President of Northern Wisconsin Building and Construction Trades Council. We have been actively pursuing a private PLA for the reconstruction of the Husky Oil Refinery. Tonight, I'm asking for your support of a resolution for the private PLA that Northern Wisconsin Building Trades has proposed to Husky. The reconstruction is estimated to take 350 to 400 workers, upwards of 1 million man-hours, in two years to complete. A private PLA would both... Would directly benefit the local economy and community. A PLA would ensure our local construction workers and contractors have an opportunity to work on this project. A PLA would ensure a contractor from Texas, Louisiana, or our area could not bring in the needed workforce before putting our local workers on the project first. A PLA would ensure the money earned by both workers and contractors stay in the community not only during the reconstruction, but after the project is complete. Any traveling workers would utilize lodging, restaurants, and the many other businesses and services Superior has to offer. Just asking for you guys' support tonight for our proposed private PLA that we have already proposed to Husky. That's pretty much it. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to happy to ask them, or answer them.
Discussion. Councillor Sweeney? I'm sorry, Councillor Sweeney. Councillor Olson actually made the motion. I have to defer him. Councillor Olson?
Okay, just... We've been through this process before with project labor agreements. The difference here is that this is a private one with an owner, and this would... There'd be no monies coming from the City of Superior, the State of Wisconsin, or Douglas County. The biggest thing that I would like to remind everybody is that the building trades, and there's a good portion of my brothers out there, and I appreciate you guys coming here, we represent 6,000 working families in the Twin Ports, men and women. They're provided health care, they're provided pension, they're provided apprenticeship programs, they're provided training, so that when we go do these jobs, especially in an industry setting like Husky, that we make sure that we send the most qualified, most skilled people to those jobs. In the event of asking the support of this council, it is nothing more than having you get on board when and if that refinery is rebuilt. And the schedule is that it is in a demolition of the current facility right now, and Kyle, I'm going to ask you to touch on this, but the proposed rebuild is going to be starting in October or November of this year. So, we do have a meeting set up June 5th.
Yes.
With officials from Calgary and Husky, so that is the reason for the support, and the advantages to the community is the money that's brought in to here, the beds, the heads and beds, our restaurants, our somewhat limited retail, but hopefully, everybody pounding the pavement on Tower and Belknap and Billings Park and South End and whatever, so that's about it. Just asking for support for this, not, "We've got a resolution that's in your packet. If there's any questions on that, Mr. Bukovic would be able to answer those questions." Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
You still have to, I assume, negotiate with Husky Oil.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
You still have to, I assume, negotiate with Husky Oil.
Yes.
And what they do or don't do, the impact is what they have and what you're, right?
Yep.
We have virtually nothing to do with that. We have no involvement in it. We will have no involvement on a personal basis or a citywide basis, right?
Yes.
From the standpoint of governance.
Yep, just unless you guys vote to support the resolution, that's your only commitment to it.
Okay. I just want to ask one question, one more question.
Yeah.
Was there a similar agreement between the Essentia and your organization when that started?
So that with the Essentia, the new hospital, that is between the Duluth Building Trades, and they did sign a PLA, and that is estimated to bring on...
And did the City of Duluth sign a similar, or support agreement?
I am not sure on that. Did they? Okay. Yep.
Further discussion. Councilor Fennessy. You said 350 to 400 jobs, right?
Yeah.
And I think we touched on this just briefly, you know, when we talked, but you guys have 350 to 400 men and women that are ready to hop in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we will be able to amend this.
Okay, yep, that was my only concern. Thanks. Further discussion. Councilor Van Sekel.
I just wanted to briefly thank Councilor Olson for bringing this forward, for everybody attending, and to you, President Bukovich.
Thank you.
Councilor Ludwig.
Well, I just want to state that, you know, I see it as a win-win situation. We have, you know, potentially 350 workers with good-paying jobs and benefits, but also, you know, Husky benefits in that they, you know, they get well-trained, qualified workers. I've been the victim of shoddy work, and, you know, and so I know what it's like, and I know Husky, in this case, would get, you know, quality work from well-trained workers. Thank you.
Councilor Sutherland.
I'd like to thank Councilor Olson for bringing this forward as well, and everyone, brothers out there for coming in, labor union for 10 years, worked out at Husky, I see. A lot of contractors already are from this area when it comes to PLA agreements, and probably could be some that could be affected by this, but that's the way it's got to be. And thanks for bringing this forward, and I hope Husky sees that we support this and can make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 12.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department, amending the traffic code, disabled do not block sidewalk zones by adding 23, 34 Banks Avenue.
The motion is by Councilor Sutherland, the second by Councilor Bender. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 12.2 is an ordinance introduced by the License and Fees Committee, amending Section 22 Animals to allow for an over-the-limit or prohibited animal application.
The motion is by Councilor Dahlbeck, second by Councilor Sutherland. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Counselors, we are back in regular order, election of council president, which is old business from the previous meeting. So I remind you, we pick up where we left off. Our candidates are Councilors Ludwig and Fennessy. We will proceed to a roll call vote. Please state the name of the candidate you would like to support for council president. Will the clerk please call for the vote?
Yep. We are starting with Councilor Van Sekel.
Ludwig.
Councilor Bender.
Ludwig.
Councilor Sweeney.
Fennessy.
Councilor Fennessy.
Fennessy.
Councilor Elm.
Ludwig.
Councilor Ludwig. Councilor Sutherland.
Fennessy.
Councilor Kern.
Fennessy.
Councilor Dahlbeck.
Stain.
Councilor Olson.
Ludwig.
We lack a majority. Shall we proceed to another vote, or are there other motions? Councilor Fennessy.
Counselors, we need to move on from this. It's, this has been, you know, three goals that we've had at this. We're obviously at a stalemate. The first time was, I had five votes, Ludwig had four. The second time, Ludwig had five, I had four, and that followed today. I have no problem going to what's been done in the past, going to a cutting of the card. It happened back in 2000, whatever, when Dan Olson drew the higher card for the president, so. So with that, I move, as a one-time action, this body uses the drawing of a deck of cards, the highest card being drawn, the winner for election of the president of this council has a mechanism to resolve the deadlock we currently have.
Counselor, that motion is out of order.
Frog, would you mind weighing in?
Yeah, it's out of order because this motion is effectively to suspend the rules, and you cannot suspend the rules to eliminate a basic principle of parliamentary law, which would deprive counselors of the ability to vote. Counselors have an inherent right to vote, according to Roberts Rules of Order. You cannot deprive them of that via any means, including suspension of the rules. Furthermore, the city ordinance requires a majority vote for any action by the council. This would not be the result of a majority vote. Therefore, it is out of, it is the decision of the chair that this is out of order. If you'd like more time, Councilor Fennessy or Mr. Prell, to generate a more detailed opinion to investigate that, I'm happy to submit further inquiries.
I don't think we need to debate this on the council floor. I'd, you know, if there's a disagreement here, I'd rather us take our time, do this the right way, and so I'll make a motion to table this until the next meeting, and then get the opinion from our city attorney, from the League of Municipalities, and then we'll see how that goes.
That doesn't require a motion, Counselor. You can just request an opinion of the attorney who will provide it.
The motion was to table this until next meeting.
Table?
This vote.
The, oh, yes, we can table this vote. Motion, the vote for council president, Counselor. That's the motion you're tabling?
What's that?
The second is by Councilor Dahlbeck, to table the vote for council president. Is there discussion on the motion to table? Council Ludwig?
Does he mean to table or to postpone?
This would have the same effect, as would adjourn. These would all, under the rules governing the election leadership, this would all move it to the next meeting, and it would come, under a motion table, it would come from the table, the same way as has happened in the last couple of weeks when we adjourn. It would come in the same form, and we'd just pick up where we left off. Further discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have no further business, Counselors, and are adjourned. Well, I'm sorry, Councilor Olson, do you have legit...
Well, Attorney Prell has his light on. Is that anything to do with...
I just want to be sure that I'm clear on the directive for some help with a written opinion. What I'm gleaning from this dialogue is that you would like me to weigh in on whether or not it is appropriate or legal or permissible for this council to utilize the cutting of the cards or some game of chance to resolve a 5-4-1 vote deadlock for your council president. Is that accurate? Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I have one question. I thought that the discrepancy was that we couldn't go to a tie-breaking mechanism because we can't reach a tie. We have the most privileged citizens in the city refusing to vote, so we cannot reach a tie.
Counselor, that's actually not your main discussion right now. The request is to gender an opinion from the attorney on whether any mechanism is permissible. And at this point, Counselors, this is not an...
I thought that we had.
This is not an agendized conversation, and so I want to, we have a request from a counselor for an opinion. The attorney is free to further inquire of that counselor for that opinion, but I don't want to carry this conversation forward. We have no further business and are therefore adjourned. Thank you.